Billings, how you doing? Doing well, thank you.
(inaudible) 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 Good evening. We'll go ahead and call the Burlington City Council January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here and hopefully you'll return. At this time, I would ask for, if you have any electronic devices, if you would turn them off, we'd greatly appreciate that. This time, we'll call on Councilmember CeeLo Fawcett for tonight's invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings on the leaders of this country, this great country, the state and the city. Give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the right decisions that will make life better for the citizens of Burlington. I ask you to protect our men and women in service, keep them out of harm's way. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation in reference to the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine for the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. At this time, I'd recognize Master Alvin Billings to come forward as I read this proclamation. Give you an opportunity to move forward if you like. Proclamation proclaiming January twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen commemorating the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine day. Whereas Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine AF and AM was chartered on January eleventh, eighteen eighty-eight, and is celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years of being a cornerstone of the community and whereas during its one hundred and twenty-five years, the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine has served as a fraternal order of men striving to make even better and is comprised of members from all walks of life. And whereas the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine is a mainstay in the Burlington community and has been located at thirteen oh seven Main Street since nineteen fifty-five and whereas the efforts of the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine result in the betterment of the state of North Carolina in part due to charitable contributions to the Masonic Foundation, the Masonic Home for Children in Oxford, North Carolina, and the Whitestone Masonic Home in Greensboro, North Carolina. And whereas members of the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine work to assist communities across the country during times of need through contributions to the Masonic Service Association. And now therefore, the City Council of Burlington does hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to proclaim January twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, as the Beulah Masonic Lodge number four oh nine day in Burlington, North Carolina, in commemoration of its one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Jack, you guys want to stand? Just real quick.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Thank you. Good. Jack, you need to give him this guy. Thank you. Can y'all (inaudible)? (inaudible)
One hundred and twenty-five years, we'll do this again.
Okay. (laughing) I'll say a couple of things. On behalf of Beulah Lodge, we certainly appreciate this proclamation and recognition. We are proud to be a good citizen of Burlington for one hundred and twenty-five years and hopefully to continue that for the next one hundred and twenty-five years and beyond. On our next stated communication, which is our next meeting on January twenty-eighth, we invite each and every one of you for dinner at six thirty. We will open our lodge at seven thirty and then open it again for visitation for members of the community and we would love to see you folks there. Thank you very much again. Thank you on behalf of Beulah Lodge and we appreciate it.
No, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do for the community. Wow, could take a long time.
(laughing)
(inaudible) 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 Next item on the agenda is a report. North Park in Motion. At this time, I would introduce and welcome April Durrell, the Executive Director of Healthy Allamance. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mayor Wall and members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be with you all. Tonight, I hear that we are going to give three announcements about North Park in Motion and I bring you greetings from the board members that couldn't be here tonight, but we do have a few in the back from Elon University, from the Health Department and one of your finest city staff, Jane Smith. So we welcome them and thank you again for having us. First, I am pleased to report that Elon University's Human Services Department recently selected North Park, the youth dance program specifically to receive three thousand dollars where funding was provided through a grant, the Learning by Giving Initiative, which engaged students over a semester-long project to learn about nonprofits and learn about how grants work. And the course ended with a competitive process where they actually had to vote and consider other nonprofits in the community. So North Park in Motion's dance program beat out the others that were being considered. So we're really proud about that. And that money has been given in a sum of three thousand dollars to Healthy Allamance because it had to be a five oh one C three nonprofit agency, but we set up a line item for North Park in Motion and that money is being spent on the dance programs. We wanted to report that. Secondly, as you may know from other times that I've spoke with you all, that Allamance County's Health Department in partnership with Healthy Allamance has received the Community Transformation Funds, which is a pot of money through the Affordable Care Act. And this money is given to communities to help improve their health status. So a team of collaborative workers from different municipalities have been already hard at work with this grant. And I'm glad to report that we've secured approximately twenty-five thousand dollars that will benefit municipalities in Allamance County, specifically Burlington, doing such projects such as billboards, farmer's market enhancements, tobacco policy improvements and other evidence-based interventions. And this is just the beginning of a five-year project, so we look forward to working with you all as we continue on that grant. Last, but definitely not least, I'm thrilled to share that one of your fellow councilmen, Mr. Fawcett, was recently recognized as Allamance County's Community Volunteer of the Year for his work in the community. And this was made possible by the Executive Council of Community Council, which is under United Way, and it was funded by the Hayden Harmon Foundation where a thousand dollars has been given to the charity of his choice, which he has selected North Park in Motion. And we've put those funds with the other three thousand through Healthy Allamance, giving a grand total of four thousand. And I would like to close my comments tonight with a few words that are specifically from his nomination, if you don't mind. So, Mr. Fawcett is a familiar face around Burlington primarily due to his public service as a member of Burlington City Council and numerous governing boards throughout the county. What many people don't know about Mr. Fawcett is his passionate commitment to revitalizing East Burlington. Mr. Fawcett has been a founding member of North Park in Motion since its inception three years ago. On many evenings and weekends, you'll find him volunteering at the Mako Vigolo Center or the surrounding grounds during his very limited spare time. This work is near and dear to his heart. A few accomplishments include that for the first time in seventeen years, the North Park Pool was opened on Memorial Day weekend, remained open until Labor Day weekend, offered free swim lessons and extended pool hours. This resulted in record-breaking attendance for the first time ever. In addition, throughout the park, you can now see families enjoying picnic areas with tables, grills, garbage pails. The library branch now has extended hours and streaming internet. The park now hosts a community garden, a roadside farm stand, and these may seem like simple things to many of you, but this park and community has not had many improvements in recent years, so this is truly something notable. The initial work at the park began in a grant with two thousand, it was in two thousand eight, which you probably remember, the money to transform the ceramics room into a dance studio. But this was really only the beginning of the project and a committed group of people have been hard at work behind the scenes to see that this is successful. Mr. Fawcett is one of those heroes at North Park. And it wouldn't be the place that it is today or the place to be without his efforts. So we really appreciate that and commend Mr. Fawcett. So that's all I have to share with you all tonight. And I brought the award with me, which was why I was a few minutes late, because I forgot it in the car and had to run down the street and get it. So we'd like to present this to Mr. Fawcett. And thank you all for having me. (pause) Thank you. And if the other members of the group want to come up, I don't know. (laughing) That's okay. Take those back.
(inaudible) I got something to say about him, though.
Thank you and thank you.
No, thank you. We appreciate it. (applause) Mr. Fawcett, would you like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Law, go here.
Okay. Well, thank you for the award and the group of people that we're working with, Bud and Beth Warner, Glenda Lennon and our Jane back there, it couldn't, this couldn't have been possible unless these people worked as hard as they did. North Park has come a long way. We couldn't have done it without Tony Laws and Parks and Recs, which is, without him, we couldn't have got started on this thing. So Tony has been one big help to us getting started. We have some things that we're going to do coming this year that we're excited about. We've got more participants happening in our farmer's market. The leadership that April provides is outstanding and the leadership that Bud and Beth provide with the students from Elon, we couldn't ask for more people to help us out and the job that they do. And I really appreciate this and the team that I work with. So thank you guys so much and thanks, Tony, and your department. Thank you so much.
Mr. Lawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Councilman Fawcett, a very well-deserved award. And I appreciate all the kind words you said about myself and the Recreation Department, but really the credit goes to the North Park in Motion. And I know April, Glenda, Bud and Beth and Jane and some others have been with this effort ever since we started. We got a grant a number of years ago, maybe two thousand eight, yeah, five years ago, and they just didn't stop there. That grant was put to good use, but they've really expanded what they've been doing. And North Park has really had a dynamic transformation. Lots more activity there, lots of upgrades to the park, lots of programs, people participating. And I can't thank them enough for all the efforts they've put into that because it really, really shows. And if any of you get a chance to take in the programs over there or see the dance facility or any of the other improvements they've made in the outdoor, you know, walking track, fitness equipment, the community garden, please take a minute to visit. And they also have a farmer's market there every Thursday. So it's really been a major improvement and I really want to thank y'all publicly for what you've done and it really means a lot to us and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawes. Thank you again, guys. We appreciate you being here tonight.
I would like to say something about CeeLo. I'm going to tell you, this has been a pet project from the very beginning. We went to lunch within two weeks of CeeLo being sworn in and that was the first thing on his mind, talking about the condition of North Park, the activities of North Park. And frankly, we get a lunch about once every couple of months and it remains on the forefront of his mind and a lot of the work over there, I commend you for it there, Bud.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a code of ethics to closing conflicts of interest. This time, we'd recognize Ms. Ford.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. This time I ask that you are in potential conflict, you still need to make sure that.
None.
None.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes, December eighteenth, two thousand twelve, City Council meeting.
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda, item one. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. A, to approve the following traffic commission recommendations. A, to approve a no turn on red sign for the traffic signal on Sharp Road, Western Approach to Rawhut Street. B, to approve a no parking zone on the west side of Kitchen Street from the southwest corner of Main Street and Kitchen Street extending southeast to a point two hundred and fifty feet from the same. B, to set a date of public hearing on February fifth, two thousand thirteen, for citizens to comment on the area housing and neighborhood improvement needs and proposed activities for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen, community development program. C, to authorize an investment account at Raymond James and Associates Incorporated and to authorize the city manager, director of administrative services and finance director as signers on the account and to authorize the city clerk to attest the resolution. D, to approve a carnival permit for Powers Great American Midways to operate March eighth through twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, from five PM until eleven PM weekdays and from one PM until eleven PM on Saturday and Sunday. The carnival will be held in the former Western Electric Parking Lot located at the northeast corner of North Church Street and Graham Hope Del Road. All requirements have been met. E, budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash thirty-one, CDBG home program loan repayment, spelled out in your agenda. F, budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash thirty-two, RICO appropriation, is spelled out in the agenda. G, budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash thirty-three, substance abuse, is spelled out in your agenda.
Move approve consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Ms. Reese, I saw the insurance certificate. They did, they are up to date on that because last year they weren't. I know you guys stayed on top of it.
You through?
I'm through.
Okay. New business, City Council, two.
Forget that.
New business two. City Council will consider approving the proposed fees and charges scheduled to be effective January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. This time, I'd recognize Mr. Owen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there are a few changes this year, just some clarifications in the schedule except for Parks and Rec annually. Parks and Rec makes up the majority of our fee schedule and it's the process that the staff reviews fees, looks at operational costs and then involves the Parks and Recreation Commission with a subcommittee that reviews those fees and then a final proposal is made by the commission to council. So I ask Mr. Lawes, if he would, to get up and kind of review because the majority of the context of that recommendation does come from Parks and Rec.
Once again, welcome, Mr. Lawes.
Somebody's got to tear it up, don't they? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Mr. Owen said, we do make up a lot of the fees and charges, probably more than all the other departments put together and we have an extensive, this is, what you got was probably just a proportion of what our fees and charges schedule is, but all of them aren't changed on an annual basis, just where we think they need to be. This year was fairly simple for us as far as, we didn't make that many changes. We simplified some processes. If you look on your papers, you see a lot of pink where it says delete. A lot of those were just deleted to simplify the fees and charges that we have for a certain facility or activity to make it a little easier for the public to understand and for us to administer. We did make some changes at the depot downtown because we do have rental requests for the depot and different activities there and we wanted to encourage that more and also use it in conjunction with the Paramount Theater. So there's some changes on there as far as the depot goes. We did increase a few fees. Adult athletics went up for both residents and non-residents across the board for all our adult athletic activities, not a huge increase, but a modest increase. The, what we used to call the weed school program at Forest Hill Community Center has now been moved to Fairchild Community Center on an extensive renovation of the activity room wing and done a lot of that work with a contractor, but also with our Public Works Buildings and Grounds Division and helped us in that. And that's really at full, actually a waiting list to get into that program. It's called Exploration Station now and it is a fully state-licensed daycare facility for primarily three, four and five-year-olds. The Aquatic Center, we did make some reductions in some of our passes over there. A pass is not a daily fee. It's a three-month, six-month yearly pass depending on what the category is. And through recommendation from our staff at the Aquatic Center, they thought we could increase participation if we reduced those passes slightly and encouraged more people to take advantage of those. If any of you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer those, but we have done really well over the years with our fees and charges. We generate somewhere from thirty-five to forty-five percent even in tough economic times. Translates to two to two and a half million in revenue coming in on the fees and charges that we have in our program. So we're very proud of that, that all the money is expended on recreation and parks. And Burlington is not just tax money. The participants do participate and I like to think of it as the ones that are using the programs help pay for them and that's a real good use of a user fee.
Questions or comments to Mr. Lawes?
If I could, Mr. Lawes' reference to is that's forty percent of the total operation cost of the department in terms of money brought back in in reference to fees.
Yes, sir. Of our total budget, that's what I was referring to, that we generated quite a bit of it through the fees and charges program.
Any comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to approve the fees and charges schedule, effective January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second. Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Next item, number three. City Council will discuss the vacant council seat. We obviously have, Councilmember Ross has resigned. We do have the letter of resignation here. At this time, the council has two options. We can do nothing and proceed with four council members or we can proceed with the policy that was adopted two sixteen ten. At this time, I would ask what would be the desire of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I've been on one side of this situation where we've had a vacant seat and it's a hard thing for me to do, but I think the way the council is set up now and the amendment that we passed that we should move forward with this to put a body on the council.
Any other comments?
Mayor, if you could, could you briefly review, you know, that procedure timeframe, that sort of thing?
Okay. What I would ask this time for the City Attorney, Mr. Bateman, if you would review that policy, please, that was adopted two sixteen ten, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the policy statement as adopted by the council is essentially a three-step process. The first process is for the council to authorize the advertising of the position, which will run once a week for two weeks. It's about a ten-day period. At that time, there will be a ten-day period within which interested applicants may submit letters to the council. The council will then review those letters and select three of the applicants for consideration and the actual appointment may be from those three. I would like to point out to the council that all of these actions have to be done at regular public meetings. And the votes may not be a secret ballot. All votes will have to be open eyes or nays and will have to be done in an open session. Ms. Ward has put together a schedule that the council could follow. If you authorize the advertising tonight, I think she may have provided you with that schedule, Mayor.
I do have that, yes.
And that process would actually, as you go through the timeframe on it, would delay the appointment to probably the first meeting in March, March fourth.
And I'll be glad to read that for you. We would advertise, if we decide to move forward, we would advertise this Thursday, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. At that point in time, the letters would be the deadline. Ten days after that would be a Sunday. So we decided that it would go Monday at four o'clock would actually be eleven days from the last day, which was the twenty-fourth. And then all the letters of interest received will be distributed to council on February fifth. Council will review letter of interest and select three applicants. Personal appearance and interviews with the three selected applicants would be March fourth at the work session. And then consideration slash vote of three selected applicants would be March fifth at the council meeting. Any questions on the timeline?
No. Going back to what Mr. Fawcett said, I don't think we have a choice as to whether or not to fill the vacancy. I think that's, you know, it's a full year or a better part of a year. Furthermore, to not do so, in essence, I think it's by our charter that we, that's the process, the council fills a vacancy, is it not? And to me, that's mandatory. That's not something we can choose. In essence, to do so, in my mind, basically means that we're deciding that we're going to give ourselves some additional, additional fourth vote apiece for a year-long process, for a year-long. I don't think we need to go down that route. I think we need to fill the vacancy and as soon as possible.
Okay.
I don't know if we're going to do it tonight or what, but there's certain criteria, I mean.
Before, let me interrupt just one second to make sure everyone's on board that we proceed and move forward with this process that Mr. Bateman read, which Councilmember Ward, you actually wrote that policy for us. So did you have any comments or any questions?
I was going to say that I feel like we probably need to move forward because, you know, I don't know the (inaudible) but you could have a split vote. You really do need five in the event there's something that needs to be decided between now and the next election, so.
Okay. All right. So it seems like we all agree that we move forward with that process. And again, I'll review that, but I'm sorry I interrupted you. Mayor Protem, I hope and go ahead. go ahead.
No, I mean, I, I, I understand the, the timing on it, if, the quicker we can get it done, the better off we are, and, you know, uh, criteria, I, I just have written down some things that I think that are important, as, as we address, but I get, maybe now's not the time to, to go through those, but, uh-
Well, uh, I, probably is, I mean, uh, the quickest we could do it is the timeline we read, that would be advertising starting, um, Thursday.
Thursday, this week.
So, that, this is the fast track on this timeline, the way that the policy was written, so, if there's something you, you want to say in reference to, uh, what it is that you're looking for in this vacant seat, then I think now's the time, because, starting Thursday, we could actually start accepting them. So, go ahead.
Okay, well, I mean, in CLO, and, uh, Mr. Fosse and I, we've talked about this, we talked about it before, because we've had vacancies before, and, and, um, one of the criteria that I have always, uh, expressed every time there has been a vacancy is to fill it with someone, uh, I mean, I think obviously, you, you look for somebody with some integrity and some honesty about them, and that, uh, is, uh, involved in the community, someone, I think, that's knowledgeable of municipal government in general, is certainly, uh, very high on the criteria for me, and frankly, someone who's knowledgeable of the City of Burlington's issues and the history and our process here. Uh, you're looking at a short period of time, you're looking for somebody to come on board who is not, uh, doesn't have a great deal of, of a learning curve, in my mind, this is important, and frankly, I, I look to folks that have served in the past, uh, just, and as to whether or not they would be willing to come fill out a term. I think that's, we've done that in the past on occasion, and that's one of the criteria that I think is, is, uh, something that I would give some weight to, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you.
And I agree with Mr. Huffman, I, I, you know, I was passed over, but, in retrospect, I look at this as a, uh, as a, a position that we, we'll have to have somebody that has some understanding of city government. At that time, I, you know, I didn't, you know, now I, I, I think I have some fairly good knowledge of how everything operates, but, uh, again, I agree that, uh, we do need someone that can fit that, that bill.
Any comments? Okay, so we, obviously, we would ask that, um, uh, Ms. Ward advertise, start the advertisement on Thursday, we would ask Ms. Hawley if she would, uh, actually put this, a timeline and advertisement on the website as well, and we will proceed along that path. Any other questions or comments in reference to the vacancy? Okay, that brings us to the public comment period, we have one. This time I'll recognize, uh, Mr. Steve Deaton. Welcome, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wall and Councilman. I just want to come and, uh, and it's, it's, uh, tonight with all the activities going on with, uh, North Park in Motion and the, uh, Masonics, I mean, it's just, uh, Burlington has a wonderful culture, and, uh, as many of you know, I serve in a prayer ministry called The Prayer Station, and we do four locations every week in town right now, and we've worked many street events, uh, we've also worked the, uh, Carousel Festival. And I just want to come and thank you for what you do, voting on these things and allowing them to happen, to just give you a slight update, uh, at this past year's Holiday Magic, we had over thirty opportunities for people to come in and pray. Now, some of them were sparked by the Connecticut shooting tragedy, I think a few of them were, uh, about three or four, but the most amazing thing were, we had groups of children that would come by, and they would look at the sign, and they'd ask their parents, what does that sign say? And they'd say Prayer Station, tell them Prayer Station, and the children would say, can we go in and get prayer? So, Burlington has a wonderful culture, the opportunities that y'all vote on through these events, these recreational events and activities and so forth, just gives Burlington a, a wonderful feel, a hometown feel, and it's also opens up to everyone who wants to come and express their beliefs or whatever, as far as I can tell, it's, it's always open to them. We, uh, look forward to two thousand thirteen, The Prayer Station does, continuing to work in, in some of these street events and so forth, and, uh, and just meeting and being part of Burlington, meeting the citizens of Burlington and being part of Burlington. So, I just wanted to congratulate you for your wisdom on voting for these things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the kind comments. Next on the, uh, agenda, City Council comments?
Nine.
Um, couple, um, Monday, January twenty-first, city offices will be closed to observe Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, Makeo Bigelow Center Annual Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday, January twenty-first at twelve noon, uh, January twenty-sixth, uh, the Times News and Burlington Recreation and Parks Annual Chili Cookoff at eleven AM at Holly Hill Mall. The last comment, uh, that I want to make is something that I think we've all talked about at some point in time, uh, it's about East Burlington, and I want to take a few minutes and bear with me as I go through this, I know we're towards the end, but I'd like to, to get some feedback and, and make a proposal to the council if we can. As a council, we serve all citizens of Burlington, all citizens of Burlington. Each year, we're asked how we can better serve East Burlington. I noticed that we have it on our agenda for retreat items, uh, several years in a row running, and, uh, several months ago, I received an email that was copied to all of you, uh, basically, uh, what we were gonna do about East Burlington, and, and he tried to basically call me out about some of the broken promises, and, uh, so I met with the gentleman and explained what the council had been doing, had done in the past, and, uh, the CDBG program, the business incentives for the location in East Burlington, uh, the boarding houses discussion, improving infrastructure, the CBC program, the neighborhood policing, the neighborhood meetings, uh, and some previous discussions that we had about, uh, parking on the, uh, front loans, and, um, stuff on the front porches that we'd had some discussions about earlier as well, and I reminded the person that it would take three votes to get anything done. So, we had another meeting, and, uh, I suggested that we ride around, uh, East Burlington, uh, to let him identify some of the sites and some of his concerns to me, so I could relay the information back to council, and we did that, and I want to half-worth, believe it or not, to share his concerns with us. So, what I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to propose a work-study group of citizens that live in East Burlington to share their concerns and make suggestions on how to improve the situation, and what I mean is, they live it every day, I know that, uh, Councilmember Ward and myself, I think we, we're, grew up in East Burlington, former, uh, Councilmember Ross did as well, uh, and we talk about that often, the problem is, we don't live there now, and things have changed greatly. So, what I'd like to ask is that we do put together a work-study and not making it political. It's not about politics, it's about improving that particular situation. Now, the only rule that I would say that we need to have is you must live in East Burlington, not own property in East Burlington, because some of the things, I think we've worked on this council before, uh, with, um, the, the, uh, boarding houses, and I know that some of you have put more time on that, Mr. Ward, in reference to trying to track down ordinances and stuff for us years ago. So, what I would ask is that we do a press release requesting citizens from East Burlington to come together, we place the information on the website as well, hopefully our local newspapers will help us in advertising and spreading the word about what we're trying to do. We would advertise the month of February, and then, the, a month, excuse me, in March, we would actually put together, uh, the citizens that would come in. Now, to take the politics out of this, I would ask, uh, Mr. Owen, to allow a staff member to be the liaison between the group of people and the staff. First meeting would be in March, at whatever date, and then, the goal of this project would simply be making recommendations that the council could review and possibly implement. You know, we, we're thinking one way, the people who live it every day see it another, and let them have the opportunity, let them have the floor to buy into their own, uh, ideas, as opposed to us forcing the ideas. So, I would like some feedback from, from council, and again, I, I don't want to, I don't want this to sound like it's just East Burlington, but this is a place where we can start. It's, uh, um, if we're successful, then we can expand to other parts of the city as well, but I think this would be a great start in trying to put something together and not making it political, and letting the citizens, uh, do the buy-in and try to implement to improve it. Questions or comments from council?
How large a group are you thinking about, Mayor?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I don't really know, depends on what kind of people show up, i- it's gonna be operable about the people that show up, and all, all I would like is a staff, one staff member to be in charge of organizing, and, uh, talking about a place to, to actually meet, and let the, East Burlington, let these citizens run, if there's a hundred that shows up, then obviously we won't be able to meet the first meeting in the chambers here, but that, I don't know, I don't have any idea if thirty people would show up or ten, but I think that what I'm trying to accomplish here, and hopefully we accomplish together, would be simply, this is an effort to allow them to give us feedback, if it's twenty-five people or a hundred people. I'd like, I, I would hope like you, a hundred people would show up, this is an opportunity for them to share their thoughts. So, I don't have any idea, but this is, the gentleman who, we rode around and talked, this was a suggestion that he said to me, maybe, maybe we need to try something different. So, to me, this is something different, but I want all the council to buy in, and I want it to be our, our project, um, for trying to improve, um, East Burlington.
Let's see, I, I will, let me say, I, I know we have had neighborhood meetings, we had them, was it two thousand eleven last?
Right.
And, uh, I think we're probably talking about doing it again here in two thousand thirteen, and we went into the neighborhoods as a council and met, and I, I found those things very, very informative, coming, folks talking to us, but also us being able to talk to folks about things that are specific to them and their neighborhoods, even down to the point where they were talking about problems they were having with their neighbors. I remember in East Burlington, uh, Fairchild Park, part of the conversation centered on how so much of the property had gone rental, uh, in nature, and how that brought its own set of problems regarding upkeep of property and that sort of thing. I think it's a great, grand idea. Uh, I have no problem whatsoever with going, and as part of this, branching off with, you know, into a kind of a focus group sort of arrangement, and sit down and talk with people and go street by street, and what sort of concerns the neighbors on those streets have, uh, because there are certain things, of course, that we can do as a city, as a city council, there are other things that people might like for the city to be able to do, but as a practical matter, we don't have the authority nor the power to do such.
Sometimes, and that's a great point, um, I, I think sometimes, um, citizens think we can do things, and that's why, um, once they, once this thing takes off, then they make recommendations, we can quickly figure out what we can do and what we can't do, and if it's changing ordinances or policies, then, then we, we need to review that, but I think this is a good start and a good effort, if we can get the participation from the citizens, uh, this is a cry out from us to them, as opposed to them crying out from, from, to us, so, we'll see. Um, any other comments?
I think it's a good idea, Mayor, I, I believe it is, and I think, I think you really, you don't know totally where it's going, what you're saying, let's get it going and see how it evolves, how it develops, and then let it take its own shape.
Absolutely.
I, I think it, I mean, I'm interested in East Burlington and-
Absolutely.
-West Burlington, I, I'd like to see you move forward with it.
Good.
Yeah, my, my thing on this is when we have the Neighborhood Watch Meetings, and especially in some of these locations, the turnout has not been too good, you know, and that's my concern on these things, is the turnout. You know, we, we're going out here asking the citizens for their input, but when they don't show up at the meetings, then, you know, sort of a lost cause, I'd like to see it happen, you know, if, what we gonna, what will we, let me go back, let me, what will we use for boundaries for East Burlington, that's, that's what I want to-
Well, I think that, that's a very good point, and I don't know the answer to that in, in, in tonight, I mean, this was sort of, I thought, talking to the gentleman again yesterday, um, you know, I don't know, let's just see how many people, goes back to what Councilmember Ward asked, how many people are you expecting, I don't know, but let's say we have a hundred.
Yeah.
And they're all from somewhere, I mean, that's a good start in reference to East Burlington, I just don't want the, um, you know, the, I want to make sure they live there. We've all experienced the, the other part of that, you know, property owners and, and homeowners, or, excuse me, property owners and people who actually live it are two different people in some cases, and we've experienced that, so, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, right this second.
I'm, I'm interested in both, because I think that's, that needs to be part of the dialogue, as I just pointed out, I think part of your problem is you've had a transition to a lot of rental property in the, in your residential neighborhoods over there, and there's a, there's a fair amount of frustration, uh, it was when we met in two thousand eleven with a lot of the folks that were remaining to own, that are longtime residents of the area, and properties, neighboring properties that had gone, uh, uh, basically rental. I have no, look, I, I know this city council, and I don't know anybody, including Mr. Ross, who's not, who aren't with us, who, we spend a lot of time, people don't know that, people don't know that you spend, how much time you send doing city, city council work, but I, I've never seen anybody object to it, I would have nothing wrong with gritting East Burlington and going, uh, neighborhood by neighborhood, so to speak, send out invitations, Mr. Fosse, I think, you, you can't, we'll count on people coming here to City Hall or this meeting room.
Right.
We need to go there, I don't care if we're meeting, uh, in, uh, somebody's backyard.
Well, I think, I, I agree with that, uh, but I'll think in the, originally, what I was trying to get to was a central meeting location that everyone knew where City Hall was for the most part, that we could open up these doors, staff member, and, uh, have it right here, and from that point forward, you could have it at Forest Hills, you could have it at, um, at Cronodal Center, uh, Fairchild, North Park, wherever, that's fine, but a central-located place that everyone knows and recognizes, and let's get some people in here, let's do a good job of advertising it, and let's see what happens. And then if we have people from North Burlington complaining about using the terminology East Burlington, then we, we, whoever shows up, we go from there, let's see, I hope we have a problem with that, to be honest with you, it'd be a great problem to have.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I appreciate your consideration, uh, of that topic, and, uh, we'll just move forward then, if I don't hear any objections. Any other comments from, um, city council members? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a-
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. Thank you.